I'll call the Board of Trustee, oh, you got that going on.
Yes, sir.
Board of Trustees, regular business meeting to order for September 5th at 12 o'clock PM. I would ask our Police Chief Byron Smith if he would open us to prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day of life. Lord, we ask that you put your blessing over these proceedings. Be with each and every one of us. Give us a clean heart, clear mind, and clear conscience in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Ken, will you lead us?
Yes, sir. Ralph, get up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mazer, would you please give us a roll call?
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Fleischman?
Here.
And Mr. Mazer. All right, we'll go to old business. First on this slate is Shakers. You have some, you have something for us, or Mr. Woods has something for us? Mr. Mazer?
Yes, sir, I just put him on the general case because he had...
Okay, Mr. Woods?
I'll start out with a continuation from the last meeting. I don't appreciate my voice being squelched in public. I want to correct the statement that Mr. Mazer said about y'all talking to our lawyer. We did not talk to our lawyer. The lawyer that I suspect he was talking about was the insurance company. Morgan, okay? We did not talk to our lawyer. So that was a misstatement. I just wanted to make it clear, but we couldn't see fit to let me say that. It is going to cost us too much to continue to have to fight our own government in this. You've got deeper pockets than we do. We have submitted a demolition permit. The schedule will be tore down on the 10th. If you guys can get your work done and not drag us out until 30 days, because we're trying to do within the guidelines, one of 30 days. So you gotta, you guys gotta get on your game and get the permit approved to get that done. I've still not heard from Bill Tool and Associates. This is the fourth time that I've asked for it, the second time from y'all.
What is it that you need from Mr. Tool?
Well, I suspect he's the one that approves the permit.
So...
He's a building inspector, and if I'm wrong on that, I apologize.
So you've turned in paperwork here, is that correct?
Yeah, I did not, but my contract...
So your contracts are turned in. So now that the paperwork is turned in, the procedures, there's always procedures.
Amen.
So just calling up Bill Tool and say, "Call me," you're not going to be first on the list. If you turn in work, if you turn in paperwork that he is going to need to see and do, now he has something tangible that he's going to have to look at. The last time we were here, we told you, he doesn't work for you. He's not your engineer. For you to ask about different trusses and different things that may or may not be okay, that's not his workplace.
He's, he's the inspector that will approve it, but we're past that.
I understand.
We're past that. And now is all we're trying to do is get the demolition permit signed. We want to get started on the 10th. And so we're asking you guys to get this done because you quite clearly said you're coming after us at $500 per day that it's not down. So we've gotten on the getup and we're moving to that end.
Okay.
And so I'm asking you to get, help me do what you've asked.
Okay, cool. Now that it's turned in, what's the procedure and timeframe?
The Ohio Building Code states that they have 30 days to review your permit. So the building can't be demoed until the permit comes back approved and it's picked up and bound to escape. At that time, you can begin to demo.
Right, but that doesn't fall within the 30 days that he gave us to get it torn down.
If you'd like us to tear it down, we can tear it down.
I, I think what he's saying is we did the demolition...
I know, the timeframe doesn't match up.
Yeah, so...
Well, once we get to, you know, obviously the board can, if we see that the permit is in and it's being done, I'm sure that we would be, I'm sure that at the deadline, we, you can come back, the board, and I'm speaking just as me. I'm sure that if we have a plan in place and the permit is going through and et cetera, we can look at alternate dates without it costing.
And that's all I'm asking for, is that work. But we've given up, we're disappointed with our government. Our family has run businesses in this township for over 40 years. We've owned that property for over 30 years and there's relatively little help in us getting this done. We have four buyers to come in here and we've walked them and showed them to you. But if you guys filed the thing with the insurance board that put a cloud and all these attorneys, the reins back, it's a wait-and-see game. And, and I can't get off that merry-go-round and you guys with any rights file what you filed. There's no reason that building has to be torn down. It can be salvaged and put back up, but you, 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 sometimes you cough, your nose is by your face because you're going to lose value from that property and therefore tax revenue.
No, we won't lose tax revenue.
It's a mathematical certainty, sir.
No.
If the value was up here at, I don't even know what this, let's say it's $350,000, when it's tore down and it's now worth $80,000, you're, you have to mathematically...
Do you think it's going to stay empty forever?
Do you think it's going to be rebuilt tomorrow?
Eventually it will be. And then, did you look at the value, what a new building owner is going to be worth versus a building in the condition it is now or rebuilt? I am certain with what's going on with Westland all, everything in that corridor, there's going to be a lot tore down and a lot new going up. The property is worth more tore down for you and cleaned up than it is if there was a building sitting on it. Because it's not going to be long, someone's going to be knocking on your door going, once Westland area is developed, they're going to be knocking on your door, making you a deal that you can't say no to. And if they, if you have a clean slate, I am certain that it'll probably be something that you can't come down.
Okay, well, what I'm going to say to you is, that's an opinion and yours is different than mine.
I understand that.
And so, but that doesn't, that doesn't really matter.
So the last thing I, that I, since we're chatting, the process in which we did with the insurance, we do with everything. That is to proceed to protect the township. If someone does not take care of it, there's funds from the insurance to take care of it, so we're not using taxpayers' dollars to tear down and isolate.
Right.
So that is procedure. That's not picking on them.
And I, I understand it, and I agree with that law. I don't disagree with the law. I'm just saying, if we filed too late and the insurance company didn't follow the law, we didn't break the law, the insurance company broke the law. So that money had already been distributed and, you know, that's, you know, spilled milk. So none of that matters because we have contracted to demolish it within your wishes. And it will bring it down to an $80,000 valuation, the property. And for unknown amount of times, you will get the tax revenue on that, okay? So it's, it's, it's going to be one-fourth of the tax revenue that you used to get. But, but that doesn't matter. You also lost an advocate for, for bringing in income tax to this area, just, just like Prairie Township had with Westland and the hospital and all those down that corridor. You lost an advocate for that. I was for that, you know? I, I will work very hard against it.
You done, Jim?
I know.
James, go ahead. So I just want to let you know that losing your faith in your local government is okay with me because you don't know the amount of phone calls that we had from people who wanted something done with that property. So all those people felt like their government was letting them down because it sat there for so long. So I can let you go and you can be disenchanted as far as I'm concerned because I'm serving the many people who have contacted me that says that's nothing but an eyesore and they wanted something done, and that's all I got. I don't want to go back and forth on just what you...
I don't have a back and forth because I respect you, Mike. You, you have advocated for us, in my opinion, and I appreciate that.
And then, and then at that rate, what did I get last week? But you tried to catch me in some type of a trap with some questions.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a trap.
We're good.
But, but to that end, my final question is this, Mr. Leisure. Do you have a conflict of interest with the fiscal officer and 385 Georgesville Road, Georgesville, Inc. and/or our family?
Thank you for your questions, we appreciate it. Is there anything else that you have?
Well, my question was addressed to Mr. Leisure.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice day.
All right, well, be blessed.
All right, moving on. I believe this is my old business. Resend motion regarding flex time. I've got it. Just real quick, so we had a quick meeting on 8/26. Yes. We were kind, we came in, we had to do some business with moving some employees around and everything. And during that meeting, we also conducted the flex time situation that was going on, and it was sort of muddled. John, you thought we were talking about some time for Robin. I was, thought we were talking about some time that Jim was going to be off some time. I would just like us to rescind that motion and then redo it.
Make it clear.
And take a vote and have it cleared because I'm on the record of being one way in that vote, and when I, and I made a mistake. I should have listened better, I should have known exactly what we were voting for, and so I want to just clean it up. So I would like to make a motion that we rescind the flex time motion from 8/26, and I would ask for a second, and then we can turn around and redo it, and it'll stay in place.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll second that motion.
I'll call for the vote. If there's any more, is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischman?
Yes.
And Mr. Mazer?
Yes. Do you have a motion on the table to the USM?
I'll let John, we're just going to redo exactly what you did.
Do we have it in writing? I mean, I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, I, I don't have it in writing.
So I can, I can just wing it if you want it.
It's, it's about...
Yep. So be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin...
Are you making a motion or a resolution?
I'm making a resolution.
Okay.
I'd like to make a resolution. X is the number, I don't know for sure what it is. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves Jim Stevens', his flex time in full from the period of, whatever the period is, until the current period, back into place so that he is able to use it. If there's no further question on it, I would ask for a second.
I will, I will second that. And, new discussion? I would ask for a vote. Mr. Blevins? No. Mr. Leisure? Yes. And Mr. Fleischman?
I don't know if I'm...
Do we want to have a discussion on this before we...
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. You've actually already voted for this.
Yeah.
And I had voted no.
Okay.
And so to be true to myself, because I had voted no earlier when we talked about this.
Okay.
I, I felt it, I can't vote no. I gave my explanation on why I voted no.
Okay.
And then when we did it at a emergency meeting...
We're changing it from...
It's going to pass. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
But what I'm worried about is, did you see something that I didn't see? And I was just worried, are we...
I explained to you exactly what I saw, John.
Okay.
During that meeting, and it didn't seem to make any mind, and so I, I'm not going to sit here and tear it all apart again.
Okay.
I read what Mark Long wrote. It was not what was represented at this table, and I'm going to stick with what I originally said, and my vote was no when we voted on it the first time. And then when it didn't get moved, now, am I bringing it to your attention that it didn't get moved? Jim, our fiscal officer decided not to move...
Yeah.
...the hours.
Okay.
And so you guys made a motion at that meeting on 8/26, and it was muddy to me. I thought we were talking about the time that Jim had...
Occurred.
Occurred at regular time. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes.
Had nothing to do with that up, that I had previously voted no on it, both of you voted yes, and he could get it. And I'll add to this, that I think he deserves the time. He has it coming to him, but it doesn't matter what I think, it's what I see when I read from the auditors of the state what's going on. I do not want him to have a findings for recovery from it because it's going to, if I'm right and you guys are wrong, it's going to range between $4,000 and, at a minimum, $564 if I'm right. Now, if you're right, then it's all good.
So with you refreshing my memory and seeing that exactly, I haven't voted yet, but I can tell you I'm, I'm not going to go with it until we find out for sure because I do remember what it was saying, that there's a period of time, once a person, a period of time goes away, then that goes away. Even though it was held up, we need the blessing of the auditor.
No, you don't. He, he should have a letter that says that it should have went to our attorneys.
So...
That our attorneys could have cleared this whole thing up from Mark Long if it would have went to the attorneys, and the attorney could have given their opinion, and it would have been said and done.
So, well, here's what I'm worried about. From what I've read, and now that you've brought it forward again, and we're looking at this, I remember it seen in regards to the timeframe, anything over a certain period, then you lose it. In this situation, it was a unique situation because it was being held up by the fiscal officer, and not, not fair to him that he couldn't use it.
I agree.
Now, these bank of hours are sitting there, but they're all void because they can't be used because of the deadline of the, in which is in place by the MOU. So if we use those, even though the, even though the, it is stated in his, what did I say?
MOU.
Yeah. Then irregardless, if you look at it, it says, you know, we need to find out from legal, we need to find out how do we get him those hours so it doesn't come back to bite him?
I'm 100% on board with that.
So at this point...
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Well, let us just vote then, and I'll, I'll say no, and then we can redo this. So if the motion won't, the resolution isn't going to carry, and then we will find out...
One second, John. Do you have something, Robin?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, if you can make clear to us this...
No, go ahead. Please help.
Based on the last, the, based on the motion and the directive I received from the board, I have moved to those hours.
Okay.
So I'm going to need a directive to move them back until you guys make this decision because Jim Stevens has the hours on these books now.
Okay.
Because based on the motion you gave in August. So I'm just letting you know that if you're doing something different, then I need a directive or a motion to put the hours back until you make your decision.
So there's one thing I want to interject. We were talking, it's a narrative, it deals with Mark Long. Yes, that paragraph from Jim's MOU was titled "Comp Time." The body of paragraph addressed the flex time. In my opinion, it's just the auditor being a little too critical. Okay. The intent of the MOU is flex time, it's not comp time. So you feel comfortable with this being, as an administrator, you feel comfortable with this? Oh, absolutely. Okay, so then I will get, render my vote as a yes and ask for a roll call if there's no further questions.
We already did, we already voted. We just completed it. You completed the vote.
Yep.
So it passes. It's all the discussion that we had. Y'all got us lost.
So, that was clear.
All right, that resolution passes. All right, moving on to new business.
You need to go in and reject.
Okay.
Or you want to do the new business first?
Let's do new business first. We're moving to new business, and I would ask, I'm going to change the agenda around as it is our liberty, and ask Chief Smith to come up and swing in our new officer, John Warner.
Good, chief.
Awesome.
Your left hand is fine. Put your left hand on it. And hold paper. You're going to have to read that. Unless you have it memorized.
Everybody ready with their cameras and whatnot?
Take pictures afterwards.
We take pictures afterwards. I state your name.
I, John Warner.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will in all respects obey and comply.
And I will in all respects obey and comply.
With the resolution and rules and regulations.
With the resolution and the rules and regulations.
As set forth by the Board of Trustees.
As set forth by the Board of Trustees.
Of Franklin Township.
Of Franklin Township.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of an officer with the Franklin Township Police Department.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of an officer with Franklin Township Police Department.
Congratulations, Mr. Warner. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Would you like to address the public and just link them a little bit of your history and where you come from and...
Can we get some pictures?
Sure, yeah. So my name is John Warner. I've been in law enforcement for 17 years. I've come to you from Perryville County Sheriff's Office, and I was just looking for a change, and Franklin Township had the vacancy and the need, and I believe I'm the right person to fill that need, so I look forward to serving y'all.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Perryville County, it's always...
Someone will snap that.
Okay, thank you.
You can get in, you want to be in the picture, Neil?
I'll, maybe I'll get in one in a moment. Let's have, let's let it happen, it's a little break. Do you want me to get in one?
Come on in.
Okay.
This might, one or two. There you go. That'll be fine. It's going to be dry. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Thanks for meeting, y'all, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome to stay. I'll come in later if you need us. Have lunch. All right, Patty Spencer. Your, if you're, your vote, man.
Short and sweet today. Short and sweet. The only thing I have, probably because of the holiday, we, I was not given a whole litany of information from the city, but what I do have is the city, Columbus City Council will be hosting Southside Community Hours on Wednesday, September 18th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Baric Recreation Center, and the forum is an opportunity for residents, and that's why I'm bringing it to all of you because there was no specific, just Columbus residents, it's residents, to engage with council members and city staff about their community issues and concerns. So for me, that means you can bring up information about the city, you can bring up information about the apartments that they're wanting to build all over the place. You can ask them anything, especially if you live right next door to the city of Columbus. And I know we have in, in our area township homes right next door to Columbus City homes. So this is an opportunity, if you have questions, to go and voice your opinion, ask questions. And that's all I have, and I'll keep this up here with you if anybody wants additional information.
Ms. Spencer, when, when is your next Southwest Area Commission meeting for everybody to...
Our next area commission, well, let me, let me go for here. I am the zoning chair for the Southwest Area Commission, and our area extends from 270 on the south to the railroad tracks on the west, to the Scioto River on the east, and to the middle of Mount Street on the north. Our next area commission meeting is next Tuesday night, here, 6:30, and I open the doors around 6:00, after I struggled with them for about 15 minutes.
Patty, if I may, last night was the West Scioto, and just to keep you up abreast what's going on around you, they had huge turnout, I would say 50 to 60 people in regards to the new development property that has been sold and proposed development on that site. I did, I was very pleased to hear from the commissioners there that they were asking for a reduction from four-story to two- and three-story, some of the different things. The people who live on Britain, they wanted to hook on Mr. Stevens. Are we allowed to keep them from hooking onto our street at the end, or how does that work? Because originally they wanted to widen our street. Are they allowed to just come in and rip our street up and widen it?
I don't think, they can't just come in and just widen the street. That's a question that we would have to actually kick back to Franklin County Engineers because it's almost the same scenario that we were going into with the modest house going to come across.
Yeah.
Unless things have really changed, they have to be on commission without getting the street.
So...
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
So at a, at a previous meeting, I spoke on it, and the city representatives were there, and I said, "We'll just put a guardrail off because it's our, it's, it's our prerogative that we can do that." Hypothetically, that was just me speaking as one person. That was me, kind of like putting my stamp on it. They since have said that they don't want to use that street, that the city says that's not a good way to go. So some of the messages that we've been attending these meetings, I went back to the city. I ended the meeting with one simple question, asking, "Did you go to the trustees in order to ask for the blessing basically before you annex?" And the question was no, and it was over. So they were going to bring them back. They didn't get a final, what they wanted blessing there. They seemed to be a little bit upset that they didn't have to come back, so...
No doubt that what the city is wanting to do, that it's going to be a struggle for the residents and for the townships. I don't have an easy answer. I don't have any answer. I'm just sort of glad so far we've been removed from that on this side of, of the area for now. The closest is the Cooper Stadium area.
Sure.
And I can tell you what's coming up for Cooper Stadium is in October, the developers are going to be coming before us to ask for signage for event planning. So if you're interested in any information on that, just come to the meeting.
And it was all unfortunate that that was by previous board... And it was all unfortunate that that was by previous board, that that was suggested in annex to the city as well. That was Franklin Township.
That was Franklin Township. But again, go to these meetings. We do have a city liaison that comes to our meeting. And we do have city employees from various departments that come to our meetings. But relatively no, anybody else. So, I think the only person we've had fairly consistent are the owners of Double Happy, Hopkins and Brown Road. We should be getting information of what they're wanting to do. But they're having to also wait for information about the roundabout that's going on down there. I'll take stock.
So, I just thought I would fill you in.
Thank you.
You know, another commission is doing and what they're dealing with. Who knows if you, they ask if you've heard something, since you're gracious enough to come to our meetings, I'd fill you in the best I could.
Yeah. No, I'm not able to go to other commission meetings. I wish I were, but I'm not. This is the best I can do.
We appreciate you, everything you give us.
And I will leave this with you, so if anybody else is interested, if you guys are interested, make your voices heard. That's the only way anything gets changed.
Absolutely, absolutely. Franklin County Sheriff's Office report. I was told we have something to do.
Yeah. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the situation, but Nicole sent me an email last week telling about a resident complaining in her concerns about drug activity next door to his house. This resident does not speak English, so his daughter was trying her best to explain the situation. He was referred to go to crime tip and submit his concern, which he did. Nicole was nice enough to send me the submission along with all his information. So, I called the individual, talked to him briefly on the phone. And I got ahold of the detective from our sheriff's office. He was taking the case. I was able to read the report. But the individual didn't feel comfortable working with the detective, so I took it a step further. We have a unit called that Drug and Task Unit. I have a really good relationship with one of the sergeants who runs the unit. So, I kind of called him and I gave him a little bit about the situation. And he said, well, let's meet with the individual, the resident. So, he came down, the resident came down to our office yesterday and gave us a whole lot of information about what's been happening since last year. So, this, the resident next to him moved in last year to this house. It was a lady with a husband, and then they started bringing in other people. And the resident that made the complaint, I've seen there was a lot of traffic, in and out, the front door, the back door, different license plates. He also noticed a lot of heavy smell of weed coming from the house into his home, to the point where he made a complaint to his landlord. And his landlord made the mistake of going next door and saying, hey, your neighbor just made a complaint about you guys smoking and a lot of activity coming in and out, you know. If this doesn't stop, we're gonna call, you know, law enforcement. Well, the neighbors took it upon themselves to go to the resident who made the complaint and threaten him and his family. So, he kind of froze and got scared, so he stopped complaining or anything. However, last week, on August twenty-fifth, there was a shooting that was directly at his house. It was five o'clock in the morning. He was in the living room. He heard one gunshot and, you know, woke up from his sleep, entered one of his cars. Then there was another shoot, another, somebody shot again, entered his second car with his wife. And then they started shooting more and more where it hit the living room, the sofa where he was at, the wall. So, he was able to provide us with pictures of everything that transpired. And since then, he's been scared by him and his family. So, our detective, who works undercover, has assigned undercover detectives to work the area. So, right now, they are watching the house because it's still drug activity going on. After the shooting, he reported, the neighbor, you know, the resident reported that the people that lived there picked up their stuff and left. The only one that was back there was the older lady that originally moved in. But she has clients too, coming in odd hours of the day. So, I'm just wanting to report to you all, in case you didn't know and you do know, that we are working on this case to make sure that we make arrests and that we stop this from happening because that area has a lot of kids. So, we just don't want it, you know, to get any worse than that. We do have license plates. The resident that made the complaint, he was really good. He had license plates from every single car that came into the neighborhood. It was pictures, videos, so we submitted all that to the detective who's working this. This case's name is Sergeant Smith. If you guys want to ever look him up, he works for the Drug and Task Unit, Sheriff's Office. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that because of Nicole, we are able to put a stop to this, to the drug in this area. Hopefully, keep working that way. I'm glad that she was able to reach out to me because I was able to help this resident, you know, who have been, nothing but working, three residents of this township. So, I just wanted to report that to you guys. We still work on it. If anything comes up, I will definitely let you know what else happens. But we're working on it.
For sure. That's great. That's real.
Great news.
Good news.
So, if you guys want to share my information with the, you know, with your residents, if they speak only Spanish and they need me, I work very, I work closely with all the detectives in the sheriff's office to make sure that they can do their job and stop any crime or anything that's happening.
Awesome.
We appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
That's great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. At this time, I would make a motion that we adjourn into an executive session to discuss employment of a public employee slash official as directed by the Ohio Revise Code, Section one-two-one dot twenty-two G one. And I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Major, will you give us a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
We are adjourned into executive session at twelve thirty-eight. Where is Nicole? You need her? Tell her to shut the camera off. Patty, how are you? Good to see you. How are you? Good to see you. All right. At this time, I will call the meeting back to order and I would make a motion that we come out of executive session at one oh-two PM with no decisions made. And I would ask for a second.
I will second that, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask Mr. Major for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes. Mr. Fleschman, you have a statement to?
Yes, I'm gonna make a statement. Some of you were here at the last meeting. And I informed the audience in regards to our fiscal department. And you've seen some of the rules that we've taken to move people around. At this point, with what we can do as elected officials, being that the fiscal officer is an elected official, to be butt blank with some of the stuff that I put out last time, the stuff that we found on laptops being used not for township purposes, not showing up at meetings when we're paying a person to train her and our Jeff Wilcheck, our CPA, his time is just as valuable. Where we're going to this now is we have with legal crafting a schedule for her. Basically, her job duties are going to end up coming down to signing the checks every week or every two weeks. Usually on Thursdays, we do that. She can work from anywhere. We're not letting her come in the building to work due to the hostile work environment that was created with that. I know that some of the residents have asked questions in regards to, how do we get her out of office? Because you're paying somebody to basically come in once a week for an hour and sign checks and then leave. The rest of that is going to fall on the rest of the staff. Her job, as far as a fiscal officer, in my opinion, we can't afford her. The mistakes that were made, nearly two hundred thousand dollars was one mistake that was made and that affects us as far as our roads go and paving and et cetera. So, I think there was something else I was gonna mention again. Did I cover? I'm sorry?
Clover.
Yes. We have a contractor that is called Clover and they are, we have a credit card processing machine. For the longest time, something is simple to clean up. I don't understand why. But for months and months and months, we're getting late fees on that account. A previous, a previous fiscal officer, McDonough, is getting notice after notice after notice after notice, and he doesn't even live in the township. He is a news reporter for Dayton and resides in Dayton. Weatherman. Thank you. And so, we're gonna have to collect these fees back because it's the township residents' money. There is never a reason that these should stack up for months and months and months on her desk, the notices, and nothing gets done with it. So, it just compounds. Just like if you get a notice on, say, a credit card and you don't pay it and the next month it gets more and the next month it gets more, it's just being ignored. So, in my opinion, the job duties of our fiscal officer are not being fulfilled. But there are certain rules and regulations and state statutes. We can't have her removed. We can't. Public can't have something that's called an affidavit. Where so many residents sign it, you turn it in, the state gets involved. That has been done before when Lisa was here. And that's what got us into what we're in now and uncovered a lot of the mistakes. And we have the state auditor here and et cetera. So, I just wanted to fill everybody up, catch everybody up to speed of where we are with that. Chairman, did I miss anything else? I covered everything?
I believe we covered everything. I'm good, sir.
Okay. So, we're gonna keep the public up to date exactly what's going on and where we are in this process and stuff like that. But we asked for her resignation. She basically, I guess, in my opinion, I haven't heard anything. The deadline came and went. So, she has felt that she denies wanting to resign, declined, I should use the word declined, she wanted to resign. So, I have not seen a letter of that. So, at this point, the residents of Franklin Township is going to, in my opinion, pay for an absentee fiscal officer. So, with that being said, that's all I have.
Moving on to public comments.
Yeah, we have one. Brenda Fuller.
Do we need to start the call, or do you know?
So, anyway, I do have the affidavits. I'm waiting on all the information. Plan is to actually get it to state audit results next week.
Okay. So, if you would do a records request? And I think Mike, would you mind seeing that she gets everything, a records request that she needs?
Absolutely.
So, if he, Mike, could be the contact person for you, if that's okay?
That is perfectly fine. Mike and I have been working together on what we need to gather. And then, once everything's together, we'll have affidavits. I'm gonna get seven signatures rather than just the four because there'll be three of you and we'll get four residents. Okay? Then that way, we have our bases covered. We have to have them signed in front of an notary. But I do have all that together. And, you know, I'll be working with Mike. I'll be up here Monday. Isn't that what we discussed?
Sure. Monday works for me.
And so, I wanted to let you know about that and where we are with that. And I wanted to ask, you know, about the scrubbing of the computer. Has anything come back on that yet?
We can't enter that, I don't think, at this time.
Okay.
But you can put in a public request for it, when we get it back correctly.
Okay. So, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the meeting last night. John, you got up and left and Jeff Brown and the other guy for Heg Avenue Developer was there and they were looking all over for you.
I thought that was it. I thought the meeting was done, which he said?
Yeah. That, I thought so at first, too.
And everybody was leaving and?
But I wanted to let you know that they were looking for you to talk with you.
Joe, who was wanting to talk to you?
Rita, Rita called on you and was looking and somebody even went out. But anyway, you know, we're looking at a lot of extra vehicles over there. By at least a thousand, you know, daily. And they're not gonna have an easy way in and an easy way out. And unfortunately, it's gonna affect all of us.
You know, I thought when they hit the gavel and said, meeting was adjourned and everyone got up and started walking out, and I just slowly made it out the door because there were a lot of people. Go ahead.
Jeff Brown will be at our meeting next Tuesday night.
Okay. And Jeff Brown is with?
Well, he's, he represented the rental property group.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
You remember him?
Yes, yeah. Very smart alley.
Yes.
In my opinion.
Yes.
Your personal opinion. Thank you, Brenda.
Brenda, thank you. Moving on, I'm gonna change, here again, gonna make changes at order. Mr. Stevens, you're up. You look like you're not doing well with your, with your back, so we'll get you out of your mood.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome back, by the way.
I appreciate that. Glad to be back. Don't do good sitting, just sitting, it doesn't work for me. On agenda, we got a couple things, a little bit of the building update. Mr. Major and I actually had a meeting with our architect on September ninth with Ron, to kind of go over some things. He has some ideas about some things. We just needed to talk about it, just kind of an update. I think he's got another gentleman he was wanting to bring to me to talk with. But that's pretty much now on that. We have our stats for August. The month of August, we picked up thirty-nine loads of brush. Naturally, our signage repair within the township, rideaways, most of our rideaways. Good thing about it is we're not getting much rain, so nothing to do with the ground, which is good. Bowed a cemetery twice. We got that on a two-week thing. Bowed, still bemoan all of our rideaways. Picked up four loads of dumb trash. Some truck maintenance, floor maintenance. We seed and strolled thirty-four fifty-nine lowland bushes removed. Sent out two mow letters, sent out two trash letters, mowed only three household property properties this time. We had some storm, storm sewer repairs that we took care of on Chambers. Community garden took care of that twice. Been working on cleaning up the lot behind the shop in preparation for a new build and cut the line of sight and broadening and wrapping amongst other developments.
I got a question for you. Was it divine intervention, your foresight, that we didn't hire summer help this year? Because we wouldn't have needed it with the drought that we've been in. It's a good move, Jim. I'm gonna pat you on the back. You can, we kind of talked about it heavily. I thought we were really gonna need it. I think it was a good call, just kind of relax.
Let me see here. Last thing that I've got is, we, every year, we have to pass resolutions per the property for when we go out and mow and board, go out and collect trash, to breed, we have to do that. Instead of sitting here reading twenty-some resolutions, like we watched Mr. Major. Instead of sitting here reading twenty-some resolutions, like we watched Mr. Mazur doing so many times. I'm just gonna read one, which gives you the overview of it and they're all the same. The resolutions are all the same and then I'll go back, which I think John used to do this in the past, where you just do the progress.
Yeah. It's under the same subtitle.
Yeah. Board of trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, met in person in regular meeting at twelve o'clock noon Thursday, September fifth, twenty twenty-four. Trustees Martin below made a motion to adopt the resolution. Being resolved by the board of trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves the road department to cut the grass and weeds at, this one's eleven twenty-seven, Harrisburg Pike, partial number one four oh zero zero six four three nine zero zero, to assess the cost of property taxes as outlined within the House Bill fifty legislation. Being further resolved, that this resolution shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
You wanna do one, you wanna do a vote on one at a time?
I think, I think Mr. Mazur's got all of the resolution sheets.
Mr. Mazur, you just wanna do one vote?
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Should I do them one at a time?
No, you do them all, just do them all.
Yeah. And then at the end, what I would do is say from resolution number this to resolution number this.
Which is what we've got from resolution one forty-one, twenty twenty-four, one forty-one, twenty twenty-four.
We just need that. You have all the copies, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we got it.
Okay.
I did, I put all those copies in your mailbox, so you should have had them done assigned.
Do you have the updated ones?
The two? Yeah, I got, I got the two as very end.
Let me see.
We got the two, these were for Josh.
Let me see, let me see. We may have to get that one. Yeah. What I'll do is, I'll have...
This is gonna be the older one, it's not a machine, it's one of these. Okay, there we go. All right, there we go. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-one, eighteen eighty-one joyful. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-two, for nineteen thirty-eight Frank Road. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-three, for nineteen seventy-six Westfield Drive. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-four, for seventeen ninety-nine Eastbrook. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-five, for sixty-one horns. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-six, for thirty-three fifty Dover. I just did eleven twenty-seven, so resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-eight, for eight seventy Deer. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-nine, for eleven sixty-nine Brown Road. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty, for eleven thirty-five Coors Drive. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-one, for thirty for five, thirty-three Dover Road. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-two, for fifteen thirty-nine Brownlee. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-three, for eighteen fifty-two Little Avenue. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-four, for forty-three forty-seven Dover Road. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-five, for nineteen seventy-six Westfield Drive. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-six, for sixteen eighty-four Frank Road. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-seven, for seventy-seven Broadmont. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-eight, for fifteen seventy-five Humphrey. And resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-nine, for twelve thirty-five Green. Those would be all the resolutions for my grass. I have two for trash.
So those, those have already been timed out and after a resolution's passed, then the procedure goes good to cut, correct?
I would make a motion, I would make a motion that we accept the resolution as written. And I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
And we will wait for a vote for our administrator.
While we're doing that, Mr. Stevens, if I may, Mr. Gilligan, Gillian, we talked earlier. I'm just saying in an open meeting, I told him I would bring it up. He is with the Historical Society and is interested in information in regards to the cemetery. Hopefully, maybe there's a way to find some more funding for other things that may go on as well as the Historical Society.
I, I see him addressing you in that email and I'd just like you to...
Yeah.
And something else, since you brought that up, about the cemetery. The big sign that's in the cemetery, it's all faded out.
Okay.
We are in the process of getting another one made.
Okay.
So it's pretty, it's the same size, everything, it's pretty much all the same.
Okay. We have a resolution, we have a, we have a resolution on the table. We have a second. Like John, we just need a vote. I'm, I'm calling you for a rule call.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Glevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Yes. You're two for trash.
Okay. Now, these two here are for trash and debris we have to pick up out of the right way. The board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, met in person in regular meeting at twelve noon Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-four. Trustees Martin below made a motion to adopt the law and resolution. Being resolved by the board of trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves the road department to clean up trash and debris at sixteen twenty-three Harrisburg Pike, partial number one four oh zero 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 nine seven four zero zero, and to assess the cost to the property taxes as outlined in the House Bill fifty legislation. Being further resolved, that this resolution shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption. So that's for sixteen twenty-three. Then we have resolution, you see, that resolution number's twenty twenty-four dash one sixty, for sixteen twenty-three Harrisburg Pike, and twenty twenty-four dash one sixty-one, for sixteen forty-four Westfield Drive.
I would make a motion that we accept the resolu- two resolutions as written and I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Discussion, hearing, no discussion, I would ask for a rule call, please.
Mr. Glevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Yes. Anything else, Forrest?
That's your...
Do you want me to update the board for the bid packets?
Oh, yes.
Went out.
I was supposed to do that.
He's been sitting there in pain.
Go ahead. The bid packets for the building went out on September fourth. So, we have a two-week window where interested contractors can contact either Jim or me with any questions in the view of the site. And I will keep the board focused as this progresses.
And we had a deadline this one October.
Twenty seconds.
Okay, that can, now that's...
Thank you, sir, and, you're... Yeah, I was gonna say, go ahead and excuse yourself. If the residents want to talk to you after, they can, they can come out to your corner.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you walk, but I'll know. No, I'm talking about the residents. Walking, he has to, he shouldn't be doing, he set you on down. All right, moving on to Byron Smith, Chief Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Floor is yours. Thank you for patiently waiting. Just trying to help. How you doing, Byron?
I'm doing well, sir. There you go. We can start off with the August stats. Total runs for service, one thousand six. Twenty-five assists other units, nine burglaries, three bad checks, one DOA, three robberies, five animal complaints, forty-eight domestics, twelve alcohol-related incidents, fifteen fights, thirty-seven thefts, five persons with a gun, three persons with a knife, fifteen shots fired, thirteen stolen vehicles, six recovered vehicles, nine suicide attempts, ten vandalisms, eight rent harassment complaints, sixty-eight alarm drops, five sex offenses, ten overdoses, one hundred fifty-one suspicious persons and or cars, seventy-four traffic stops, sixty-nine citations issued and or arrest, thirty-four vehicles impounded, which includes property, and then he reports taken.
Busy time. Lot of domestics, but it was hot in August.
It's like at December and February.
And the suspicious persons, a lot of them was on the roll.
Well, there's that, too. It didn't count for at least a handful. Any questions on the stats?
No, sir. Go right ahead.
Police department updates. So, I wasn't at the labor relations meeting and then talked about parking. I think it's a great idea. I'm open to, I think parking in the back behind the voting or whatever. I'm open to whatever I need to do to help facilitate that. Talked about cameras on the front of the modular, releasing camera. I think it's a great idea. Steve and I have talked...
And I think you need a monitor. Definitely have a monitor for that camera inside.
Yeah, yeah. The, the problem, I think, is the distance, the wires, the wifi service, all these things. There, there's some kind of disruption that revolution here you can't seem to figure out.
Can we just, I know there's many different ways, even with the router that we have, that you have, that you would basically be a separate system to see, a camera that would just monitor.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, don't worry about trying to wifi it from here. I would just do it just straight right there.
Yeah, that camera there, yeah, that camera there would just be for you guys. Yeah. Check you and your men. So Steve and I can work on that. And... Hey, Gavin, you in school?
Yes, I was gonna ask on that. I was at a meeting last night, people asked me about that.
It's a, it's, it's a constant problem, so Jackson was down there yesterday keeping people from parking on Hague Avenue. He ride ticket every fifteen minutes. The problem is, we don't always have people at that time, but we need the help of the school. So I reached out to the engineer's office, Greg Thomas. They did put up signs, signage for us today, Steve. Basically, a, a light board saying, "Hey, this is not your pickup lane, don't park here." I don't know what effect it'll have, but it's more than we had before. So we're going to try to schedule something with whatever name, the school superintendent.
And we talked, and I did call her a couple, two, three weeks ago and that's what's confusing, that we're having this issue again.
And, and to add, sorry, Steve, but to add to the situation, and this really concerns me, is there's people the next street south, I can't remember the name of it. Next street south, there's people parking on that, but, okay, but the children are walking down.
The street.
Hague Avenue without their parents.
Yeah.
Is it Cherokee or something?
No, it goes back into a housing complex.
Oh, the city street.
On the, on the other side of the street, so they're crossing over.
No, they're not crossing over, they're just on the same side.
They're staying on the same side of the street.
But when you get down there by that bridge.
Right.
They have, I mean...
They have to go in the streets.
Yeah.
Part of the issue, which is not our fault, is, I guess Columbus has cut off a lot of the busing or something?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
They're not busing any.
So they're not busing, the school is gonna have to figure out a, a way to mitigate the issues. I told Greg, I said, "Well, we can shut the road off and just not let nobody down the road until two thirty." I said, "That's my solution."
They should live there.
Well, I mean, there's what, two houses? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, we just walk the road and keep you moving on Hague and if you don't like it, call the administrator. Which I, I don't like to take that stance, but not that administration. I, I agree.
Give him a cell number, too.
Well, it's true, because we don't have the ability to fix a problem. And we've been trying to work with it, with them for, you know, several years now. Right, like the engineer said, well, last year it took about two weeks to get every, the new parents educated into what needed to happen. It's been two weeks and, and they're still not getting it, so I think there's some issue with the school. So we're gonna reach out and, I don't know, we're, we're gonna best with that.
I, I, yeah, but I, I think we write, couple days of writing ticket, I know it's a...
Well, it's not really a pain, I mean, you only...
Well, taking the man up, having the man up there, it can be, it can be challenging to have one free to be up there.
So we may have to, you know, twenty minutes, maybe five or something.
Would that fall into the traffic grant?
Um, it depends. It, it depends on if, what timeframe you're in, certain times of the year, it's only used for certain glitzes.
Right.
So it may not be able to use across the board like that.
That's, that's why I'm asking you, because I don't, I don't, you're, you're well versed on it.
So what I understand, a lot of the people that had Jackson, was it Jackson that was up there? Who was up there?
Jack Jackson, yesterday.
They, they ended up, people pulled over to the church and the church, they come out and said, "We spent way too much money for this parking lot, we're not, you can't park here."
Yeah, I've talked to the church in the past, they don't want them parking there, which I get it. I talked to the gentleman that owns that catering company, doesn't want them there, I, I get it. But, yeah.
We're talking hundreds, we're talking hundreds of cars.
I know. And they don't have a big lot, the catering place. I asked him, I said, "If you can block it off during this time, it'll help your problem." I encourage him to call, but if the officer found the street, by the time they get up to where you are, they're gone. Because they're picking up their kids.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so...
But this is just gonna compound.
Yeah.
We'll get a thousand more cars from all these apartments.
Yeah, a thousand. It's gonna be worse.
I said thousand, sorry.
Oh, okay. That's gonna be worse. So, Facebook. So we are, I, I guess that was talked about, too, so we are okay with the police department Facebook page as well as myself and Steve oversee it.
Oversee it.
I'm fine with that. And we're talking about the official police Facebook.
There's only one.
That's the only one we control.
Right. As long as you guys are overseeing it and, and taking, you know, I myself, I think we need to sit down and, and develop a policy. You know, like drug busts, absolutely put it on there, but not necessarily every... Because they're not really convicted when you arrest them.
No, they're not.
They're, they're, they're still, they're still innocent until they're proven guilty in court. When you say convicted, some of them said convicted on there. Oh, no, we have to work through it, but yeah.
We wouldn't say convicted if they weren't convicted. But even the drug busts are not convicted.
No.
Did we make a motion the last meeting that says the two of them are gonna be dealing? Oh, for, okay, for the Facebook page?
I was...
I would like to make a motion, if I may, sir. I'd like to make a motion that the Facebook page will be ran through the chief of police of Franklin Township and the administrator for Franklin Township. If there's no further discussion in and out, I'd ask for a second.
I will second that. When Steve gets caught up, he'll help her roll.
Mr. Glevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
So that way, chief, you can refer back to this date, it was a motion made. And I deliberately didn't give names so that going forward, it is whoever the administrator, whoever's the chief.
And if you wanted to, you know...
Yeah, the chief can be delegate, but we'll, we'll oversee it.
Right. I think it's a good solution.
Okay. And you do. Um, so Havenwood's reached out, we are now working special duty again in Havenwood, which will help with the rising crime trends out there. Sergeant Moore is cutting all that situated of payment for vehicles with Robin, so all that's in Havenwood.
The homeless issue. Two ninety-seven gorgeous room. Royal cigar lounge, there's a homeless camp behind them. Kind of like on their patio or on their back. I call it a back porch. You have to walk behind the building.
Yeah.
And it's really hidden.
Have they called?
I don't know.
It's the first I've heard of them.
I talked to Rat Lip on it.
Okay.
But this is before he went on, but they're back. It's really nice, it's a really nice camp. I mean, they've got carpeting and all nine yards.
Where, where you're writing up with chief, on, on Al Paso Drive, on my side, on the other side of the fence. So you can actually enter it from, get on the exit ramp and then you can drive along the fence. That's becoming a tent city in there, several tents in there.
On the freeway?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that, I forgot about that one.
It's a city now.
Well, I, Jackson said something to one person.
I think he passed it on, I, he said that, something to me yesterday about that. So where they're at is in the city.
Yeah. That's state property right there.
Yeah.
So are we able to check, are we able to say anything, or is that?
It's not our property.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to some degree, and it's like, the homeless live where else, it's kind of a rotating.
Right, then who's getting it next?
Yeah.
Where they're moving to next?
Yeah. I mean, it's easier when it's on private property.
Yeah.
The property owner then gives more ability to enforce it.
Because we had a small tent city, um, there on the church property in the woods, and, uh, the church, you weren't aware of it, made them aware of it, and the amount of mess that they made.
Is it behind the first church?
No, no, the second, the big church.
Oh, okay, five thousand?
Yeah, five thousand, over the speed bump, there's an open field in the woods, it was in that woods, it's so dense. But they have left, but they also left behind, you know, the church will end up cleaning it up. But I, for some reason, that particular area, um, is starting to, because before they were behind the speedway.
Right.
Before that, they were over, um, by the animal hospital, until they cut that out, so you're, you're right, it's a revolving door where they're gonna move to.
So is the, is it, does the church own those woods?
Yes.
Are they interested in clearing it out or not really?
Well, that's a lot of acreage there, yeah, I don't think they will.
I mean, we'll, we'll do the best we can to help, um, I don't know, the city has more resources, obviously, but we'll-
And two, we're just, not just because of my address, but we're seeing on that particular street, on El Paso and Lowell Drive, a lot of activity at night, where people walking up, looking in the cars, and even in the daytime, they just-
From the bus station.
Yeah, so, uh, it's amazing, they see the camera right there, and they don't care, you know, it's-
Okay, I'll make sure everybody's aware of that.
Uh, the manager of Royal said they would sign a trespass.
Okay. Yeah, we'll need them, but give them the golden, yeah, so, send them to the board.
Thank you, sir. Anything else for us?
Yeah, Lowell Drive is seeing, um, ATVs flying up down the street.
Okay.
Uh, young kids, very young.
Well, it's definitely something.
So it's Hague Avenue.
The, the people-
All the way down.
The people live back on Mac, on, somewhere back in through there.
Okay.
And, uh, of course, it's a street stretch, so that becomes a nice, or they, for whatever reason, I guess they write up to BP to get their snacks and beer or whatever, and then-
Yes, or whatever. Yeah, that's something we can definitely, we take a look around Havenwood too, so we can definitely get those. Um, little off topic, so, we've had, Steve and I have had conversations about the mall. I have suggested in the past, um, maybe the next time we, we talk to the Rubens, you know, if they have open space, we could put a small substation in there, run a couple cars out of that, that northern area. As they do do whatever they're gonna do to the mall, it'll put a police presence there without costing them any more money. It's kind of a win-win for everybody, it spreads us around a little bit, um, so maybe just put that on your radar, Steve.
I, I would be, uh, for that as long as it's in the township.
Well, the mall's in the township.
As long as it's-
As long as it stays.
Well, yeah, they, they, they wouldn't want us there if it went into the city.
I'm just, you got what I'm saying.
So if, if they decline, then there's-
I think Steve, Steve caught that. No, it just gives us another-
Unless it's free, I mean, it's a free bill.
It gives us another benefit.
Of keeping them in the township.
It gives us another benefit, or to, another tool to use to benefit Westland area, I keep wanting to call it Westland Mall, eventually we gotta call it something else.
It'll all be Westland Mall.
It, it gives another reason for us to say stay in the township.
Right.
No, I, I agree. It'll be, yeah, it'll be showing up, we're trying to-
Well, even if the cars are leaving, they're still coming through the mall.
Yeah.
And that'll help the construction staff, so it'll keep some of that stuff down, so.
We can call it something new with the, and what they're gonna call it.
Sure, we'll call it whatever we want.
Yeah.
Uh, Lieutenant Ratliff has a doctor's appointment on the sixteenth, he may be released for late duty on the seventeenth, for a few weeks, just as a update on that out.
I'm sure he'll be ready to get back.
Yeah, no, he is. So, Steve, you have the resolution for accepting the DUI task force contract?
I do, I do, I'll read that right now, chief. This is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one three six, it's a resolution approving, entering into a DUI task force contract between the Franklin Township Police Department and the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and we've done this, what, chief, the past couple, two, three years at least?
Yeah, it's every year we have to sign one agreement.
Being resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes, entering into a contract with Franklin County Sheriff's Office, participating with the Franklin County DUI Task Force in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the contract period is from October one, twenty twenty-four, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and I've attached a copy of the contract to the resolution. And be it resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that result in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with section one two one point two two of the O R C. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency, and shall be enforced and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved that the resolution is written, and I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Uh, next, uh, Officer Roger Myers, we're requesting four hours of injury leave, um, for a D M C doctor's appointment that he had to go to last Friday, for an injury stemming back to twenty twenty. Looks like just a reexamination, they'll send you at least once a year. I sent the letter over to Steve, and I have it here too, if anyone else saw it.
So we do have documentation for it?
Okay, did we, um, do we have a resolution on it, or do we, what do we need, what do you need from us?
I, I believe you need a resolution to approve the injury leave, even in that increment.
Yeah, I think so, because there's money involved.
Yeah. I will, I will have that ready for the trustees. With our special week on the eleventh, we have spice.
Yeah, that's good for me.
Okay.
Just on, what do you say? September eleventh?
Yes, yes, sir.
Last but not least, Officer Hale, has requested, uh, late duty, um, he has a return to work date of September twenty-third, the full duty.
Who's that? Is this a new guy?
You'll think so.
Hello, sir.
Um, after talking to Steve, the conversation with Mike, um, so I know Robin has some filing that could be done. Uh, Steve has a project, I believe, that he might be involved with John Historical Records.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So would you need my recommendation to, for the board to approve, uh, late duty, um, no later than September twenty-second, since he's due back on the forty-third?
I think it would be great that if he works with Nicole too, on some of these, um, properties, he could go out if he needs to take pictures or, or et cetera, on some of these different areas, because I don't think it's best to have Nicole going out there to some of the sites to get what she needs. Um, I think there's plenty that we need to do.
Thank you, sir.
And I think that would be great.
Thank you.
I would also like to add, due to the injuries in the injury, he's just getting over on his shoulder, just for caution to the township, that we sent him for the fit for due physical, to make sure everything is good, I don't want him to hurt himself, uh, coming back to work. What do, what do you need from us on that?
Don't you need anything?
No, what, what, what I'll do is, I'll talk to his sedutor, um, he's our third-party administrator, and get a recommendation from them for the type of physician that Troy should have seen.
Okay.
And then probably what I'll, uh, well, what I will need to do is come back to the board and ask for a resolution, um, to absorb the expense of the examination.
Okay, and, um, when do you want him to come back, back duty? Um, that is up to Steve, um, probably, I would assume that it's ready by Monday.
Sir, sir, yes, sir.
And there are again, temporary changes scheduled Monday through Friday, uh, to meet the office hours of the year.
And then again, um, you need a resolution class or a motion, Steve, what do you need?
I, I would probably pass a motion, accepting the fact that, uh, Officer Hale, um, will have late duty from September ninth through, what is it, to twenty-third?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah. Steve's back on Monday to twenty-
Yeah, I would just do a motion.
So I, I will so, uh, so move on that, uh, motion hearing for Officer Troy Hale and set of dates. If there's no further question, I'd ask for a second.
I will second, um, any discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes. And thank you. Uh, Mr. Hale, did you wanna, did you wanna say anything?
Sir, may I please, sir?
Yeah. The podium is yours.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you, appreciate you, chief. I just wanna, come over today, good things, um, you guys have been really good to me, I appreciate you granting me late duty, giving myself squared away. It's very unfortunate that the accidents that I've had, um, back to back, and I know it's been rough on the department and the township, as well, it's been very rough, and, uh, emotionally trying on myself, and going physically, obviously. I absolutely don't want to get injured, you know, in the course of my duties, or this freak accident would happen to me. But I want to express my gratitude to each and every one of you for being patient with me, um, and granting me the late duty, you know, we'll be exactly what we're doing on the twenty-third. I don't foresee any problems with, you know, you guys recommending me to the doctor to say, I'll get back, you know, my doctor that did the surgery, most surgeries, um, he's fully confident, um, you know, if you wanted it, no extra time, get a little bit more strength in it, and that's all, um, because, because of the nature of the job. But I do want to express my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you, and, and the champ, and I appreciate it, I enjoyed working for the township, and, um, I enjoyed working with everybody, and, um, enjoyed working and serving the citizens of this township.
Appreciate you.
You guys, any questions that you would like to ask me, please feel free to ask me.
Sure, I'm just poking fun at you, because I know right after you came on, it's not really a joke, but you were off, and then-
I know.
And it's, it's not only happened to you, it's happened to him, the lieutenant.
Yeah.
You know, he had one shoulder, and then the other shoulder, one hurt at work, one hurt at home, the same as you did.
I know, and it stinks.
And I'm like, is it something in the water?
I don't know. What's funny is, he walked in, I'm like, I know that, and then he comes up to the table, and I shake his hand like I'm just meeting him, I'm like, oh! Well, I didn't recognize you, he was hiding from me.
Sir, yes, sir. No, I worked for Littlermeyer.
I know, that's how I've been, I've always been that way.
I know, I know, I guess I just wanted to say it speaks volumes that you come in today, took the time out of your day to come in, and just didn't let it become a report read, and, you know, you're gonna get the light duty and everything, I think it speaks volumes that you took the time out of your day to come in, and so I have no doubt that, uh, you'll, uh, continue to serve the township as you did before the injuries and stuff like that.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, I appreciate it, appreciate, appreciate it very much, appreciate the, like, yeah, thank you guys enough for being patient with us. I know it's been trying on everybody, um, God puts things in our path, and, uh, has challenges.
Amen.
For us to have come, I've brought my, my Christian mentor with me today, um, so, um, it's been hard. It's been hard, and, uh, I've had so much stuff happen to me over the years, hit by cars, neck, neckties, and, you know, all kinds of stuff. I'm gonna do the absolute best job I can, like, as I've always done, when I put that uniform back on, and, uh, thank you so much for-
Thank you.
I'm sure the public is, thank you, they supported you, allowed you to take the time, your position was held, and, uh, so I, you know, I'm sure, you know, you, you feel like you owe a debt of gratitude.
Absolutely.
And what the people are just, you know, proud to have somebody that's going to know them and know their needs and the areas that they need it, so we know that you'll be there, so we, we thank you.
Always mean that for everybody.
You know, the board wanted to, you know, by us supporting you is our way to say thanks for the support you give the public.
I support each and every one of you, and I'll be there for you.
We know it though, we know it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for us.
Sir, thank you so much, sir.
All right, moving on. Now, let's move on. Chief, on.
Thank you, sir. All right, one. Fire department took nine hundred and seventy-eight total runs, a hundred and seventy-six of those were in the township. We had two cardiac arrests, both had a heartbreak, by signing out to the hospital, thirty-seven fires, fifteen of which were buildings.
Been through those surgeries.
Two for sure were township homes.
Thanks.
So thank you, folks, for helping us out with those. And then we can move on without, if you have any questions on stats. Uh, we had two resignations, Columbus Fire, had two of our best. But if we could just have a motion, do you wanna do them together or do them separately?
They're doing separate.
Okay, so if I could have a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter Eli Malink, effective eight thirty-one twenty-four.
So moved on the motion to accept his resignation, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Then I would ask also for a motion for, to accept the resignation of firefighter Kevin Mason, also effective thirty-one twenty-four.
I would make a, I'd make a motion that we accept the resignation of said firefighter, um, Kevin Mason, and I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
So chief, are, are Columbus still on, allowing, or are they going through the program?
They're going through the program.
I didn't know if they were like, please, they were just allowing it to-
I believe Columbus is separating those that are paramedics and those that aren't, so they can push those paramedics out on the streets. I don't know, I don't know, just speaking.
Because, I mean, we're talking at sixteen months, by the time they go through both, or more.
Uh, and with those two vacancies, uh, I would ask for the two resolutions that are, with Steve?
I have those.
Higher replacements.
Uh, the first resolution is twenty twenty-four dash one three seven, resolution authorizing the hiring of Jared Waters as firefighter one for the Franklin Township Fire Department, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and endorses. The recommendation of the fire chief to hire Jared Waters, effective September ninth, twenty twenty-four, contingent on passing the pension physical.
I should, he's already done it.
Okay.
I should have results tomorrow.
Okay, a- as a firefighter one, at an annual salary of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five, fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars and thirty-five cents, per article nineteen of the I A F F, Local One Four Four One Collective Bargaining Agreement. And be it resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees resulted in such formal action, were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with section one two one point two two of the O R C. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force, effective immediately upon- And it be further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force, effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Can we have, uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, can we have a vote?
Uh, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
The next resolution I have is twenty twenty-four dash one three eight, resolution authorizing the hiring of Cole Covert as a firefighter one for the Franklin Township Fire Department. It be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and endorses a recommendation of fire chief to hire Cole Colvert, Covert, effective September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, as a firefighter one, contingent on passing the pension physical, annual salary of fifty-four thousand four hundred dollars and thirty-five cents per Article nineteen of the IAFF Local fourteen forty-one Collective Bargaining Agreement. And that all formal actions of the board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and all deliberations of this board and any of its committees resulted in formal action and were in an open meeting in compliance with section one to one point two-two of the ORC. And that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be in full force, effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, I'd ask for a second.
I will second, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
So Chief, um, can you give us a little bit of an idea where the people are getting, are coming from? Are they?
So Cole is coming from London, the City of London's Fire Department.
Okay.
And Jared is a part-timer at a handful of departments just recently out through paramedics.
Okay.
So he's starting fresh with us.
Okay. So hopefully, I know a lot of people stay because they like the township. Um, I know a lot of people come because, uh, there's an old saying in the Bible that says, "One that has taken off his armor shouldn't boast like one that's putting it on." And our people, uh, really, when I went out and rode with you guys, run after run after run after run, and they see everything. That makes them very good, makes them battle hardened. And then I know other departments offer more money and I can't blame a family for making that decision. But I do really appreciate the ones that make their whole career here, um, and decide to stay.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to publicly thank Steve and Robin and Nicole for putting up with the speedy actions to get this Jared kid hired by the night. It wasn't easy, it fell in our lap, but it's gotta say it was at least, at minimum, four shifts in the next week, which is a thousand dollars a shift, so. A little extra effort to put for a thousand dollars if I could have helped. So I really appreciate it. I know, put more on Robin's not ideal, but she came through. I just want to say I appreciate it. Uh, other than that, we received our rebuilt medic final. It's next door, I'll have them pull it out if they're here. So if you want to, if you leave through the front door, you'll be able to see the medic. We ended up taking a box off an old medic that was, the truck chassis was pretty beat up, had two hundred thousand miles and seven years worth of runs on her. And so, but the box was in good enough shape, we took the box off, put it on a new chassis. Finally got it back. Uh, we decided to do this mid-twenty twenty-three, so. But she's there, so if she's not on a run, take a look at her on the way out, she's shiny and new. She's been christened as of this meeting, somebody backed into her, the phone, so I'm right up here. Put a scratch on her bumper, so. She's a West Side truck now.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
You have nothing new, can you?
No.
Steve, you got a sticker to put over it?
Nah, I'm just painting it.
No, that, that's, uh, you're the one on the West Side, put a sticker over it.
This battle scar.
Steve, do you wanna go through those resolutions now or just do them later?
Um.
They're down in your section.
No, we can do that now, Chief. Uh, let's see, one three three.
Yeah, one three three, one three four, and one three five. The power casters.
All right, let's do one three three. And, uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three three, resolution authorize, authorizing the transfer of funds. Whereas the annual appropriation resolution for twenty twenty-four appropriated funds to be transferred from the ambulance and emergency medical fund to the EMS vehicle replacement fund. And whereas section five seven to five point one three C, revised code allows for a capital project fund for the purpose of accumulating resources for the acquisition, construction, and improvement of fixed assets in the township. And whereas the Board of Trustees desires to authorize the transfer of funds for EMS vehicle replacement purposes. So the Board of Trustees authorizes the transfer of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the ambulance and emergency medical fund to the EMS vehicle replacement fund. And in all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board. And all deliberations of the board and any of its committees have resulted in such formal action were in compliance with section one two one point two-two of the ORC. And that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written.
I will second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
I apologize, I was a little distracted there. Yep. Whenever you're ready.
Then the next resolution I have is twenty twenty-four dash one three four. It's a resolution authorizing payment to Horton Emergency Vehicles Group. Uh, whereas the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, authorized the remount of the F five fifty ambulance in resolution twenty twenty-three dash one three one. And whereas a failure to appropriate the funds honor about the time that authorization was approved and the fiscal, fiscal officer's certification was not generated. And whereas the Board of Trustees approved appropriations in resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-two. The fiscal officer is hereby authorized to pay Horton Emergency Vehicles Group the sum of one hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars. And in all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board. And in all deliberations of the board and any of its committees resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with section one two one point two-two of the ORC. And that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be enforced and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Sir, did I hear you say, uh, assistant fiscal officer?
Oh, you did. And the fiscal officer's certification was not generated. Yes, sir.
Um, so moved as the resolution's written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Yeah, that was one thirty-four. You're at one thirty-five.
Um.
Anything else for me? But, oh.
No, sir. I'm gonna get Nicole to print out one thirty-five for me real quick and I'll have that.
Real quick, Bob, um, was, one of the fires that were in the township, was that one on, on, was we had that? Want to just share real quick how you went in, cause you sent me the message and you found the little hats the kid had gotten that day at your, uh?
Yeah, so, uh.
Okay. If she comes in, Shane, will you ask her to print out, um?
Just spent an afternoon up in the neighborhood goofing around, and as we did it, we passed out little kid plastic helmets, to say frank, little. So, lo and behold, later that day in the evening, a house catches on fire in that neighborhood.
Cole, for some reason, I don't have that one.
And when the fellows went in to put the fire out, they noticed the yellow helmets.
Probably lost it.
They'd given out that day, sitting in the, in the breezeway in the entryway, so her grandkids had actually taken apart. So, strange coincidence of events.
Absolute.
Training right there. Stay low, get out.
No injuries. Pretty, pretty seasonally good day off, so you don't need to store.
Thank you, Bob.
This kind of goes to show, Mike, I'd like to commend Mike for putting together a lot of the areas in which, um, the Fire Department has, uh, put on this touch-a-truck where, um, some of the interactions with kids and et cetera, in this case being that they were grandkids and, and et cetera, kind of get an idea of what to do and understand, you know, the force of the water and how to operate and, and just understand what firefighters do. So there are certain areas that you don't necessarily run too far up north and et cetera, and then here you do. You happen to have that fire, which, Mike, you just so happen to help put that together for that area.
Well, I wanna be truthful, I was there that day and everything, but these guys have got so good that they're putting them together and they're calling B to say, hey, here's where we're gonna be, and I, and I appreciate it. I mean, they just latched on to it. I think, I think their men, his men enjoy it tremendously. I see smiles on their faces as much as I see on the children's faces. So it's just a really good time if you're ever, we probably won't get many more in this year, but I would like to see it become a tradition and I think Bob would too, but if you're ever around or it's gonna be in your neighborhood, I, I think it's a good idea to try to get out and see that it makes you feel good in your heart.
Yeah, and, you know, to, to piggyback off what you said, though, um, as a, uh, long-serving trustee, I had not seen this done like it is in all the different neighborhoods. I've spent time in a few and et cetera. So something that was on your heart that got started and it takes off like, no, no offense, but, like wildfire. And, um, and the guys are really into it and a lot of the events that we're at, it shows the people what Franklin Township Fire is about and the equipment, um, that the taxpayers are spending their money on.
I think that was event number three up around the North End, right? One church, and church off of your street and then that, so, I mean, we were, it's been well represented everywhere. And I helped all the projects, you know, we're getting ready to Byron and, uh, Bob and I are gonna sit down real soon and try to come up with that Christmas parade route, and we're, we're gonna make sure it gets to, we're gonna try to hit every section of the township that we can possibly get a truck down or car down or whatever, but we need everybody, all the communities in the township to be certain.
Hopefully Santa's shoulder will be built up.
We could always help, yeah.
We may have picked up a future fireman, too. One of the teenagers in that neighborhood helped us clean up hoes. And he's gonna come ride to see what the fire fighters all about.
Good.
So.
Yeah.
He's about to graduate, didn't really understand what he wanted to do after high school, so.
Sounds good.
He got a full dose of firefighting.
Mr. Leeser, I think the rest of this is yours. It looks like we got some close debate and some resolutions.
Well, uh, I do have the resolution twenty twenty-four, that's one thirty-five, it's a resolution authorizing payment to Striker for the purchase of a Powerco.
Yes.
And the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, approved in resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one, the purchase of a new EMS Powerco. Excuse me, contingent on the township, being awarded a grant from BWC reimbursing forty thousand dollars towards the purchase. And I have exhibits explaining the transactions. Uh, the funds were not appropriate honor about the time that the authorization was approved and the fiscal certification was not generated. The Board of Trustees approved appropriations in resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three two. Fiscal officers hereby authorized pay Striker the sum of approximately sixty thousand dollars and the forty thousand dollars will be reimbursed via the BWC grant. And that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting. All deliberations of the board and any of its committees have resulted in such formal action were meetings open to the public in compliance with section one to one point two-two of the ORC. And this, this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution's written, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
The next I have is, um, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three two. It's a resolution that provides supplemental appropriation number eleven for the period commencing in January one, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas it's necessary to provide the current expenses and other expenditures of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio during the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the annual appropriation resolution twenty twenty-three dash two seven zero for the period from January one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and is amended, the sums presented in exhibit A here too attached, and the same hereby set aside appropriated for several purposes for which expenditures are to be made for and during the year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. All formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board and its committees resulted in such formal actions were open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two-two of the ORC. And that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be enforced and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written. I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
The next resolution I have is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one four zero. It's a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax, tax limits and certifying them to the county auditor. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin County, Ohio, in accordance with provisions of law and has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January one, twenty twenty-five. The Budget Commission of Franklin County, Ohio, has certified its actions thereof to this board, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this board. And where part thereof is without and what part within the ten mil tax limitations, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin County, Ohio, that the amounts and rates are determined by the Budget Commission and certification. rates determined by the Budget Commission and certification be and the same are hereby accepted and be further resolved that there be and hereby levy on the tax duplicate of said township, the rate each tax necessary to be level, levy within and without the ten mil limitation for tax year twenty twenty-four collected in twenty twenty-five. I think you're familiar with, with the tax amounts from the resolution we passed with the, with the proposed budget associated with this. If not, I can go through those figures.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go through.
Be resolved that the clerk of this board be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor. And I had spoken to Kerry Ritchie with the auditor's office, originally this is supposed to be signed by the fiscal officer, but as the administrator, I've been given authorization to, to sign this. So again, this is, this, this is a document from the town, but I just wanna say this is held in an open meeting, a public meeting, and it's in compliance of section one two one point two two of the Ohio Vice Code.
We'll move on to the resolution.
So I just need an adoption of the resolution?
Move, I'll move on, the resolution is written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. I would ask for a roll call vote.
Throw this in? Okay. Uh, Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
I was waiting, cause it looked like he was looking for something to point out to us, Mr. Major, when he was looking, flipping through the pages, giving you time to look for it.
Give me a second.
Yes. Got a lot of paperwork in front of you.
A lot of paperwork this meeting. We're just getting a lot done.
Never create.
Um, now we'll go into the next half hour of junk cars.
That's great, Jim, I'll, I'll get it, I'll get it signed and, and off to the county auditor.
Are you able to scan that and send it to him, or do you have to mail it?
Oh, I have to scan it. Scan it too. Then the next resolution I have is twenty twenty-four dash one three nine. Obligations approved by the Township Administrator between August twentieth, twenty-four and August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Board of Trustees of resolution twenty twenty-one dash one thirty, authorize the Township Administrator to approve the current obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven point one one of the O R C. Pursuant to the provisions of section five oh seven point one one A of the O R C, the obligations approved incurred by the county Township Administrator must subsequently be approved by the adoption of a formal resolution with the Board of Trustees. Uh, the obligations authorized incurred by the Township Administrator is presented in the exhibit A attached here too are approved. Uh, that all formal actions in this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board, and are in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the O R C. And this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption. And again, this is for the period of August twentieth, twenty twenty-four through August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of seven thousand and five, seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved as the resolution is written. I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any, um, any discussion? I do have a question. Okay.
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, power wash concrete, uh, up at the, uh, firehouse on Solon Avenue? I'm just curious, what, what does that all entail? What, I mean, I didn't hear about it before, I'm just curious what?
Since we had the, all the asphalt reseal, we just had a company come in afterwards and clean up all the concrete, and then the, the owner of the company stopped by and ended up power washing the whole building for free, so. Well, not really for free, but he added it in because he was proud to, to work for the firehouse.
Okay, so it, it's not just the pad, it's the O inside?
No, no, the two concrete aprons that sit right outside of the firehouse.
Okay.
And then they did the sidewalk out front, and then he ended up power washing the whole front of the building. Just all the brick where the building, uh.
Okay. Just was curious what all that covered, that was it, that was all. When I went through these yesterday, that was the only question I had. I would ask for a, um, vote? We already got a second.
We good?
Yeah.
Mr. Levens?
Need a vote? Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
That was very nice, it just kind of shows, um, how people respect the job that you do and et cetera, that, you know, they took their time to go ahead and, you know what, we made this look new, let's just go ahead and clean the front of it, so that was nice that they did that.
Yeah, it was cool.
What, what company was that?
Riz and Company.
Okay. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one six two, it's a resolution approving the agreement with LifeLock Benefit Solutions. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, the Board approves and authorizes an agreement with Norton LifeLock Benefit Solutions to provide township full-time employees and elected officials with cybercrime and identity theft protection at a cost of five dollars and ninety-nine cents per month, per member for one year beginning retroactively September one, twenty twenty-four. Be further resolved that all formal actions in the board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and in all deliberations of this board that result in such formal action were in open meeting in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption. And if you have any questions on this, I'll be more than happy to.
Sure. Mr. Fleishman has some questions.
The only one that I have, I caught my attention. Um, would we not want to offer that to, uh, any of the parts, we don't have any part-time currently, but their payroll still goes through our system, would we want to, um, in the near future, offer that as well?
Sure, in fact, we can even amend this if you'd like, to include, uh?
I would just say any employee, rather, full-time, part-time.
Okay, yeah, we can amend this for you.
Cause it's, you know, protecting all of our information, whether you're a part-time person or a full-time person. And any questions, gentlemen?
So it was rented for one year, are we going to, uh, reevaluate after a year? We're gonna see if they want to, uh, put that in their collective bargaining as they come forth, you understand, like, it may not be quite a year by the time it gets around to negotiate a contract, but we might wanna, I just wanna know what the pleasure of the board is, that's all I'm trying to say, figure out here. Where we go with this, but I think we definitely have a, a need right now for.
Yep, I believe, I believe so, for sure.
Would this be, wanna be something in their contract, or is it something that the, the board is actually?
I don't think it is.
You know, offering, you know, why does it need to be contract?
I'm just saying if you wanted it, it's a benefit.
Sure.
Taxpayers are paying for it, I mean, they're paying.
Right, 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 right. But when I'm saying this?
I'm not saying that they have to pay for it, but I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, when you negotiate things, you have basically bargaining chips.
Yeah, I got you.
Yep.
Okay, that's a good point. I agree.
With all that being said, I will, um, so moved as the resolution's written.
With corrections.
With the corrections of adding all employees.
Part-time or, or?
Yep.
Full-time?
And I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Um, any more discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And then the last thing I have is just a reminder that, um, we have a special meeting scheduled, September ninth, it's the Central Baptist Church, that will begin at, um, six thirty P M.
We'll make that announcement again too, but, um, do you think you're done? Fiscal, payroll, A W, and bills?
Oh, you know, I, let me check the log on that.
Okay.
If you want to continue, um, um, I don't, I don't have that much stack, but, um.
All right, we'll, we'll move, we're, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to John, John, you have anything?
Uh, the only thing quickly that I'll touch on is the ongoing battle of protecting our borders from being, um, annexed, uh, it, it, it's, it's a daunting task to say the least, but if we do nothing, then nothing gets done. Um, again, we do have one of the battles, something called Township Wide Levy, where, um, people will have to pay our taxes as well as if they annex into the city, it helps protect our borders. Um, I have been going to the meetings, uh, with the one that is up Fisher, excuse me, Trade View and, um, Hague Avenue. I am seeing that with a big turnout, um, even the board is saying, ooh, this is a little bit much, so I, I don't know which way they're gonna go with it, but, um, I do see that they didn't just smack the gavel down and say it was approved, so I was very pleased with that. And, uh, and then I somehow thought the meeting was over and everyone got up and was leaving, and they're still talking about another parcel that they're working on, so I, I missed that in representing the, uh, township on that, but I thought the meeting was over last night when they did that. Um, but anyways, that's what I have to report to the board, I'll continue the meetings, um, so they will, um, next month, come back together again, uh, to hear this and we'll see where it's going. But the affordable housing, last night they made a comment that, you know, it's gotta go somewhere, the city is saying that they need, they're short so many housing, and my quick thought was what, so you just wanna take land from Franklin Township and put them on?
Yep.
If you feel that you are that far behind, you have a whole golf course that the city owns, fill that golf course up with all that you want. You know, you don't necessarily have to fill up Franklin Township.
There's something on golf toes.
You know, there's other golf courses.
Those, those people.
I understand, but that, that is city, that is a city golf course, but instead of making it, they could always make it a nine hole or putt putt.
I don't disagree. All I have is Mr. Levens had, um, brought to our attention that nine oh six or nine oh five, nine oh six.
Chief, did you see her?
Here's her, the property down near the car lot.
It's probably too late.
I can't remember the numbers, sir.
I did go by there, uh, we, we have discussed it. It is a major issue, so we, we are addressing that. Mr. Levens, do you have anything?
I do, I just wanna say that to make sure everybody, I know there's people watching other, uh, through the videos and know that we didn't get in the position that we're in, in the fiscal department overnight, and so we're probably not going to get out of it by the snap of our fingers, but this board is working together and diligently to get this resolved, and I just wanna let people know that, uh, we are one hundred percent committed to change, and it just has to follow a process, and we're on it now, and I just wanted to put everybody's mind to rest, cause I don't know if other people are, but I receive phone calls or people running to me all the time and ask me, you know, and I worry that it affects things coming up for election and stuff like that, and I'll say that we are on it and doing our very best, so that's all I got, Johnny.
I just wanted to read it off here, or do you have? I never found it on here.
I didn't find it.
I, I've been looking for it on and off the whole meeting, and I did not see.
Is that something, sir, that we're gonna need in this meeting?
No, 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 we can cover that in the, uh?
Eleventh?
The eleventh.
Okay.
Have we determined a time for the eleventh or anything like that, or are you gonna get back to this? Okay, it doesn't matter, I just need to know.
I'll, I'll send it to my, uh?
I just went, oh, what was this? Uh, no. What, we have sixty-some pages that we went through, I think it, it was huge, so.
Jim had a lot, Jim had a lot.
I do not see it.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Didn't see it yesterday, didn't see it today.
I will have that through on the eleventh.
All right. Um, that being said, um, meeting's adjourned.